The roll call of this meeting will be recorded, and Renee, could you do the roll call?
Amy Donahue.
Here.
Kendra Foley.
Here.
Eileen Schubalzer.
Here.
Lindsay Moska.
Here.
Lilly Raymond Reed.
Here.
Mark Sideras.
Here.
John Ports.
Here.
Thank you. Public forum is first item on the agenda? Nope. Okay. Let's move to the third category, action items for discussion and vote. We, the first item is a process for reviewing compensation of school committee members. So this was an issue that was brought up by a school committee member, raised the issue about whether we want to consider changing our compensation. And just a little bit of background on that, and we can have a discussion about it. I think I sent an email out to the school committee just to, as, a few facts about it. So the last time that compensation was changed was in 2008. That's what I can determine from my own records. In 2008, January of that year, compensation went up from a previous level of 2,100 to 3,200. And so we've been at 3,200 since that time, $3,200 per year. And I think that, and Mark can add to this, but my understanding is from the whole moral process that it's up to the school committee to make this change if they want to put this forward and include it in the budget, although there are parameters on kind of the timing for when it needs to take place. Do you want to add?
Yeah, I did speak to the town attorney a couple of times today because I wanted to make sure we were, and John and I had a conversation about this. And according to the charter, this compensation increase would have to be put into place within the first 18 months of our bi-annual elections. So it doesn't matter that some people have four-year terms or two-year terms. It would just have to be, in this case, it would have to be done before the end of June of this year, and it would take effect when people are sworn in in January. The other issue that we discussed was the fact that we would have to make a recommendation to the town council, and the town council would also have to approve this.
Is that what the attorney said?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure, because under state law-
Well, she wasn't sure either, and it took her about two hours to get back to me.
It looked like, under state law, that, that seemed to be the case, but then it also seemed that it could be that the council could, in essence, grant that authority under the charter, but they're saying it's better-
She was, she said a better process would be for the school committee to recommend to the town council the change in salary.
Okay, okay.
But the key parameter, and she stressed, and, you know, it has to be done, if you're doing it for this next, for next January, it has to be done by June.
Right. Okay. So, I mean, the question would be how we want to go about doing this, and I, I have to admit, or at least reviewing this, I have to admit, when we did that in 2008, I don't quite remember how we did it, whether we had a particular committee look at it, I'm not quite sure. But I think it's up to us to decide anyway.
Well, I, I would suggest that probably budget and finance, I know you said the DED was going to look at what other school committees do to do, and then what, you know, we could make a, it, it would be easier for me as the liaison on the town council to say, this is what the school committee did, these are the, these are the comparable school committee compensation packages around surrounding communities or like communities. And, you know, I don't think that it would be a big problem coming out of subcommittee, going to this committee for a vote to send to the council.
Right, right. I think that's right. I think the question would be whether we do something like budget and finance, or we create an ad hoc committee to do just this. You know, I think that's kind of a choice there.
If you were going to create an ad hoc committee, I'd be more than happy to help.
Okay, all right. Other thoughts on this? Yeah, Lindsay.
It, it seems like an ad hoc committee makes a little bit more sense, only because the money doesn't come from the school budget, really?
Well, technically, yeah, actually, if you read the charter, it says, let me get it here, "The school committee may provide an annual salary for its members within the annual school department appropriation."
Just kidding. However, it, it, but it, it does kind of seem like the, the interest of what we're trying to talk about and the research we're trying to do is very separate from-
Right.
-the budget for the schools.
Right.
In a way, so I feel like an, an ad hoc committee and kind of getting other people involved in talking about it wouldn't be a bad thing.
Right, right. I think that's true. Other thoughts? Anyone else thoughts on, Eileen?
I just ask a question. Is it a, in that language, it said salary. I understood it was a stipend. Is it technically a salary?
That's what the charter calls it in every case, for the library trustees and for the council.
Okay.
Calling it a salary, so.
Okay.
Lindsay, yeah.
Um, I, I think that, just in terms of thinking about an increase in sort of reasons why, you know, I've had conversations with, you know, a few people on the committee just talking about what kind of expenses we have trying to be on the committee. And for a lot of us, there's even just childcare to cover meetings. And so, you know, I don't think the issue has come up because we're looking for compensation. I think that it's a little bit of not wanting to be in the red to serve.
That's where there's, there's a little gray area in the next paragraph in the charter.
Yeah.
It says, "Expenses," and it's "Subject to School Department Appropriation, the members of the school committee shall be entitled to reimbursement of their actual and necessary incurred expenses in the performance of their duties." So, I mean, there's a-
Good to know. I feel like I should- So maybe we should add that topic into the ad hoc committee about actually figuring out what that means.
Yeah.
Because I think that, I agree about that gray area.
That's why I think it's kind of gray.
Does that mean that we could potentially get compensated for childcare? I think, you know, as Lindsay was saying, I think some of us are definitely concerned about the fact that this is becoming burdensome financially. You know, no one's looking to make any money off of this position by any means, but I do think that the issue of just making sure that we're able to find sufficient childcare, figure out kind of our lives in order to be able to fulfill this role to the best of our ability is one that I think is definitely worth a discussion. And 2008, 2019, I think 11 years is a pretty long amount of time to go without a cost of living or any sort of increase whatsoever.
Other thoughts? So, I mean, I think an ad hoc committee is fine, I mean, if, if we want to go that way. Does someone want to make a motion to that effect?
I make a motion that we create an ad hoc subcommittee to deal with the compensation of the school committee.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, I would say then, if we do this, I'll just ask people if they want to, if they're interested in serving, just send me an email, and we can, obviously, we can go up to three, can't go beyond three, in terms of the mem, of the composition of it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have it. Okay, thank you. Next item is the approval of school committee meeting minutes from February 28th and March 4th. So those would be in your packet. The 28th, the 28th was that, was a very brief meeting that was actually at the, at the administration building. And so there's a very short one-page minutes there.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from February 28th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it. And then the other would be Monday, March 4th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 4th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it. Thank you. So let's move to reports. We have the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, which has been very busy. This is the time of the year when they, they meet quite a bit. And so Kendra's going to report on three of the meetings, March 7th, 11th, and 13th. We have hard copies of the minutes here. I know they, if you want a hard copy, anybody else want hard copies?
I'm all, I'm good, I get.
Okay. So Kendra's going to do the, the minutes first, and then we'll look at the recommended 2020 budget.
All right, I'll just do a brief minutes, because I know the superintendent is going to be, going through the budget as well. We met on Thursday, March 7th, and we reviewed the superintendent's recommended budget overview and the district-wide cost centers. There is a presentation that is in the minutes that folks can move, can use as a guide. We went through level services for FY '20, staffing shifts, the new, the non-salary budget drivers, the salary budget drivers, the priorities, funded and unfunded priorities. We talked about per pupil spending and what, what is built into that and did some comparables. Talked about grants and offsets and fees. Again, they're all referenced in the slides if folks want to take a deeper look. We discussed district administration, district curriculum, district operations, technology and facilities, achievements and goals for FY '20. Do you want to do all three?
That was March 7th?
That was March 7th.
So any questions on that report? The motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have, thank you.
Next meeting was Monday, March 11th at 6:00 PM. Again, we started with the superintendent's recommended budget. She did an overview. Again, the presentation is linked. We discussed district student services, and Kathy Dismaris came and she reviewed the FY '19 accomplishments and FY '20 goals. We talked about some of the cost drivers affiliated with student services. We went through the elementary school curriculum and each elementary school. Principal LaRoche spoke about Hosmer School, both accomplishments and goals for next year. Principal Mina Char- oh, is it Taipo? Mina Charloni spoke about Knepp, and Stacy Phelan was unavailable that night, so the superintendent spoke about the Lowell. That's it for that meeting.
Okay. Any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have, thanks.
The final meeting was March 13th, 6:00 PM. Again, we just did, the superintendent did an overview of the budget. Again, presentation is linked. The middle school principal, Donna Martin, spoke again about FY '19 accomplishments, goals for FY '20, a, a bit about the turnaround plan, ESE's turnaround plan, clubs and activities. Then we heard from the high school principal, same thing, some new electives that were very successful, FY '19 accomplishments, and some FY '20 goals. There was a note about the building up of the drama program, and I thought of Eileen. So they built up the, the program last year and they're continuing to build, which is wonderful. Then we heard from the athletic director about athletics and extracurricular, also looked at the FY '19 accomplishments and some of the goals that he's outlined for FY '20. Last, sort of ad hocked, we heard from Megan Schlessinger, the FAPA director, Fine and Performing Arts, just about some of the really amazing things. We had just come off the bandera, so some of the amazing things that, that they're building in that department. And then we had, you know, John Ports made a motion to recommend the superintendent's recommended budget to the full school committee for approval, and that motion passed three to zero.
Okay. Uh, the questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it. Thank you. Okay. Superintendent, I want to, just turn to the superintendent to submit, to present the recommended fiscal year 2020 budget. So, you know, as Kendra said, there've been, the subcommittee has met on this several times and-
Four.
Four times. And this is the kind of culmination of the presentation to the school committee. And then on April 1st, during our regular school committee meeting, we will have a formal budget hearing on this budget, and then we'll take action after that at a subsequent meeting to approve it. So we'll talk more about that timing a little bit later. But Dr. Goldstein?
Excellent. Thank you so much. So this is a little bit of a recap of what we discussed at the last school committee meeting, but we, we have gotten to that place where we have a, I have a recommended budget for you to consider, which we will then present more fully at the public hearing on April the 1st. But I did want to just highlight a little bit of the work that we've been doing over the last couple of weeks, and just discuss the process by which we attain, we, we got to this point of having our FY[1290.68][1290.68]'20 recommended budget. So whatever we do moving forward, we always want to ground the, the work in our mission, which is to prepare all students for life by engaging them in a challenging and meaningful education within an inclusive and diverse community. We inspire all, excellence for all of our students, and we inspire them to explore and shape the world around them. And we ground our work in, in three core values of equity, excellence, and community. And throughout the budget process, all of the work that we did, whether it be with principals and coordinators, the leadership team, and then in the Budget and Finance Subcommittee meetings, and as the full school committee, is looking at the ways that we support our mission and our vision through the budgetary process. So I just want to make sure people understand that that is the tie. So one thing that I'd also like to ground us in, remembering that we created four strategic objectives as part of our district improvement strategy. And those objectives, the top three are the ones that really we considered most when we developed the budget. The first objective is around equity, establishing systems and structures that ensure all Watertown Public School students receive what they need to develop and achieve to their full academic, social, and emotional potential. The second objective centers around excellence, supporting instructional excellence by building and implementing a cohesive, coherent, and aligned educational program that promotes high expectations, authorship, and student agency. And the third one that really drove the budget was community, fostering a caring and collaborative relationships among and within schools, families, and community members. So those are the three objectives that, that we used throughout the budget's development process. Oh, it's always a good idea. Okay, maybe this might work. And therefore, we're going to move forward and talk a little bit more about the budget that we have for you tonight, based on these objectives. I did want to stop, there was a question in the subcommittees around why it is, you'll see a little bit later, that we are thinking about increases in our ESL programming. And the explanation that was given to us by our ESL coordinator is, now at this point in time across the district, our English language learner number is at 12.5 percent, which then has moved us into being a high incidence district. And that was one of the reasons why it is that we have an increase in our ESL programming in terms of staff. So I did want to highlight that in terms of our demographics and a little shift that we've had that causes us to reconsider some of that allocation to ESL. Just always looking at enrollment, this is K to 12, it does not include our preschool program. Our enrollment continues to grow, not, not incredibly quickly. As you can see, it's a, it's a little bit of a slow trend line up. But certainly, we always keep in mind enrollment when we're thinking about class size and making sure that we have enough teachers to stay within our guidelines. And we'll see that there have been some changes in enrollment that have caused us to need to increase our FTE, especially at the elementary level. The process has been thorough. It began way back in September with the development of the calendar. And then, you know, we've moved on through, we set our goals and priorities, we worked with our principals and our directors to develop their, their budgets, their proposed budgets. We met as the subcommittee to approve our budget priorities. We met as a larger leadership team to look at all the different requests and determine what it was that we felt were our priorities as a district. We presented the level services budget in February to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and then again to the school committee. And then throughout the courses Kendra Foley has just described, we had three meetings to go a little bit deeper in terms of what's been happening within our buildings and what supports the requests that have been made. So here we are at the end of March. I'm here just to give you what our final recommendation is, and then we'll have our public hearing in April and move forward with a recommendation to the town council. And hopefully by June, we will have our adopted budget. So, very thorough process and done very deliberately and mindfully in terms of making sure we have the correct and appropriate appropriations for our schools. So a couple of the budget drivers I want to go through, just so that people are aware, a little bit different than last year. And, you know, thank you to Heidi Perkins, who has joined us and has really brought a difference and, and very fresh look at the way that we develop our budgets. She really focused on a level services budget, which means that sometimes in a level services budget, you have increases based upon enrollment or based upon needs of programming. And so rather than having those be priorities, because without them we can't function, those requests were incorporated into the level services budget. That's a little bit different than last year, but I do want to go through what those drivers are. So this is where I mentioned that we needed to add three, three elementary teachers, and I'm going to say right now that the last time I presented to the full school committee, we thought we were going to need four elementary teachers. The reason for the change, and we'll talk about this a bit later on as well, is that we've completed most of our kindergarten registrations. We had anticipated, right now, we have 59 students at the Knepp in kindergarten, and there was a concern that, especially given the Knepp with the, the smaller building, if we were to go over to 61, 62, 63, that we would need another kindergarten teacher. Well, our kindergarten registrations are a little lower than anticipated. And actually, right now, at the Knepp, we have 40 registrations, so we do not need that additional kindergarten teacher. So therefore, we took it out of the, the level services budget, which has freed up a little bit of money in terms of the delta, which we'll talk about in a, in a subsequent slide. We definitely, no matter what, need a grade five teacher at the Knepp. That's, that's guaranteed. A grade three teacher at the Hosmer, and a grade two teacher at the Lowell. That's because of, we have a little bit of a bubble moving through, and we need to make sure that we have appropriate class sizes at those three grade levels. We have an increase to the humanities teacher right now at the middle school. Currently, that person teaches .7. And when we talk about the ESL, kind of, again, that bubble that we're seeing, we have a teacher who's teaching, one of our, one of our ESL teachers is teaching one of those humanities classes. So by doing this shift, that frees up the time for the teacher to teach the ESL programming that she needs to teach, and also provides a little more flexibility for the principal, who's looking at ways to ensure that we have appropriate class sizes at the middle school. The other increase at the middle school is we have a .5 world language teacher who we need to increase to .8. One of the reasons for this is that currently, the programming in grade six is many students come in at reading and, and take reading instead of world language. And we're finding that we have more students coming in that actually don't need to take the reading course and would be better off in the world language course. So we need the FTE to be able to do that. So that's meeting the needs of our students. And then the last one there is the increasing the current .5 ESL teacher at the Hosmer to 1.0. We put here high school or Hosmer, because we have a need as well as the high school, at the high school. So we would like the ESL coordinator to make sure that she is able to allocate that .5 where the need is the greatest. But certainly, it'll either be at the Hosmer or the high school. We have some salary savings. We realized some savings in our budget for positions that were not filled, that were budgeted in FY '19, as well as, we have five special education instructional assistants that were budgeted but not filled due to the fact that either students moved out of the district, or they were one-to-one, needed a one-to-one assistant, and that student is now in an outside placement. So we did have some savings in our salary that we were able to use as well. Additions to FY '19, if you recall, we actually talked about this at the last school committee meeting, due to the fact that we had those five fewer aides and some of that, that availability in the two unfilled positions, we moved forward, and you voted to have two door monitors at the high school and the middle school. Earlier in the year, we increased the teachers of the visually impaired from point, actually it's .4 FTE to 1.0. We still have that position posted, and we are hoping that we'll be able to get somebody full-time in. We also have the addition of seven part-time kindergarten aides and three lunch aides at the- of seven part-time kindergarten aides and three lunch aides at the middle schools, which was needed because of the new middle school schedule. Before Dr. Carter left, he had done some switching in terms of academics with the later start times, and we did not have teachers that were able to cover the lunches, so we had to hire middle school aides. That was earlier in the year. We just want to make sure that people know that we did have some additions throughout the FY19 year as well. One of the largest drivers that we have was a 468,000 increase in Minuteman tuition. So we have an increase in tuition, we have an increase in the capital assessments. We know that now with the new Minuteman High School coming online, each of the students who attends Minuteman, we have to pay $6,202 as a capital fee. And then we also have an increase in special education, for special education students. Currently, it's 5,100, and it's going up to 62. And then the last major budget driver for FY20 that is necessary for the Level Services would be 56,761 in the lease payment for the multi-function student activity buses. So, just to review again what Kendra Foley just mentioned, we met on the 7th, 11th, and the 13th. The various members of the Watertown Public Schools leadership team highlighted their accomplishments. They did a great job. I think we feel, I'm not going to speak for the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, but one of the things that's very noticeable is the coherence and alignment to the district improvement strategy in terms of what the principals had presented, and the coordinators as well. I think you can see very clearly the direction that we're moving in and the vision that we have based upon the presentations that we heard those evenings. And then, as I've already discussed, we have an increase in the, decrease, sorry, in the Level Services for that kindergarten teacher. So, right now, the difference between Level Services and the 5% that, you know, hopefully will be allocated from the town would be a delta of about $237,707. So, what we've done with that, and we'll talk about in a second, is previously unfunded priorities were moved up to become funded priorities. The two that were impacted by this was, the top on the list was a district curriculum adoption fund. So what this would do is, for Dr. McGinnis, is to be able to put curriculum revision and adoption on a cycle, and know that there's always funding available to do that. There's nothing more challenging than when you need to buy a program for social studies, or literacy, or whatever it might be, and not have that major amount of funding that's necessary to actually have a full implementation. So, having that is really exciting, that we were able to fund that from this year, as well as some of the elementary technology requests that we had. So, just as an overview, once again, that if we, with the 5% guidance from the town, our budget for FY20 would be $50,441,424. And that represents a $2,401,973 increase over last year's budget, meaning FY19. With the Level Services, that increase for Level Services was about $2,164,266, leaving us that delta that were available for priorities. I think it's important to highlight this slide. When you think about it, you know, I think we always think about, and it's exceedingly generous to have a 5% increase, we are very, very thankful and appreciative for that. But when you think about Level Services in Watertown, that would be 90.1% of that increase goes to the Level Services budget. So, we don't have much room. I think people think that, you know, with that large 5%, that you'll be able to add many, many, many programs. You can't really add too much with a 9.9% overall, you know, delta. But I think we have done a fantastic job this year in terms of looking at our actual budgets and making sure that we are requesting those things that are only the most essential for achieving our district improvement strategy. And the things that we've been able to fund through the priorities are definitely going to move us forward. So, I think we've done a fantastic job. One thing to say about the principals, you know, you have in your packets, and I think it's on the website as well, the very detailed budget pages. If you look in there, there are some significant changes. For example, if, you know, we talked about Meg in Fine Arts, she needed a drum in the, I could have this wrong, Heidi's going to help me out if I get it wrong, but she needed a tympani drum at the Lowell, I believe, one of the elementary schools, because the other two had one. So she was able to kind of reduce in the others to make sure that she was able to fund the tympani drum so that they had a level program in all three buildings, rather than putting that as a, you know, a priority that she might get funded or might not. It was that important that she was able to shift money around to ensure that all students had the same opportunities at the elementary level. So that was the work that we want our principals to do, is to make sure that whatever they're asking for is highly necessary and completely aligned to what we're doing, and that's what they did. So, this is that very small slide that you can't completely see. But, when it comes to the funded status for our priorities, and we talked about this at the last school committee meeting, the two, well, the very top of our priorities were the middle school instructional coaches. We are able to fund within the $237,000 delta, two middle school instructional coaches, as well as the responsive classroom training for the middle school. No, that's right, that's the elementary. And then, we were able to offset a little of this from a retirement that we had at the Lowell Elementary School that actually has helped to fund a social worker for the ISP program that will be shared between the Lowell and the middle school. We are able to fund some of that elementary technology, as well as the curriculum materials at $50,000. So, that right there, that slide represents the funded priorities. I will just take a moment to, and if Teresa wants to add as well, our elementary coaches spent time actually at the middle school on March the 6th, during our early release day, and they worked with our middle school teachers, helping them look at data from iReady. And the feedback that we got from that was, wow, we really like some coaches. So, it's great, before you even have them, people are talking about the ability or the vision for what middle school coaches will do for our middle school staff. I've always said that, from day one, I'm always amazed at the openness and the receptivity for change and learning that happens within Watertown, and that was just a great example of that. Yes?
Could you just, Dr. McGinnis, talk about the curriculum review cycle? Because we don't have a cycle now, but I know you're working on that, and just to talk about that as, in the context of those funds.
Sure, absolutely. So, for the last several years, I believe, in the district before I arrived here, there wasn't a formalized curriculum review cycle. So, various departments, could be high school, could be K-12, would do their due diligence and decide some of the needs. It could be textbook adoption for a course at the high school, it could be some elementary literacy, piecemeal here and there. So what we're going to do, starting next year, is formalize this in a curriculum review cycle, which will be clearly articulated what discipline each year is the focus. Each year, there'll be work on each department or each discipline, but it will vary in the amount of work. Whether, for example, next year, we're going to start with a K-12 mathematics review in the first round of the review cycle to look at programming, K-12, transition, 5 to 6, 8 to 9, all of that. Oftentimes, it entails having outside educators come to the district and give more objective feedback. For example, one of our curriculum coordinators is going to Waltham in April to do a science, be part of a science curriculum review team. So we hope to do similar things like that. So one of the charges of the curriculum coordinators this spring is to examine area schools and other in Massachusetts curriculum review cycles, and then formulate our own.
So, in this slide, we have the total FY20 superintendent's recommended budget, which, you know, gets us to the $50,441,424 of the recommended budget for FY20. Just one note here, the column of FY20 Level Services, this was prior to the reduction of the one kindergarten teacher that we thought we would need. But in the actual allocation of FY20 budget priorities, the savings is in there. So, and by the time we get to the public hearing, we will adjust to that so you can see what the Level Services budget was, once we had the kindergarten teacher removed. But this makes up the total request that we have for the FY20 budget. And like I said, I think it's exceedingly well-developed and represents what it is that we would like to do for our next year. That said, net offsets, and I just want to also, you know, recognize the fact that, boy, I really need glasses, that that budget is what would come from the operating funds. But we know that it costs actually more than the $50 million to run a school district. We have, you know, just under $4 million worth of offsets that we take through grant funding, through our revolving counts. But it is important to note that that, the actual cost to educate children in Watertown is well above the $50 million, it's actually, you know, closer to $54 million. So, but we do have these excellent grant-funded opportunities that we use to offset our total budget. This is just an allocation of our budget by cost centers. Right now, as you know, there's a lot of, we are in the beginning of the contract negotiations, so, you know, this may change once we have settled with our unions. But right now, this is what our allocation is by cost center. And then, you know, I think it's important to put this slide, and we've had a nice, robust conversation with the committee around, you know, per pupil spending. And, you know, when all is said and done, you know, Watertown does spend a lot on our students, which is important. And a couple of things that are reflected in that, it's hard to see that we're not the highest in our surrounding communities and our comparable districts. But certainly, you know, we are committed to low class size, and we're committed to providing excellent special education services. We support our students who attend, you know, our regional vocational technical high schools. We are committed to making sure that we have the right resources for our students. There is not an area, honestly, where I feel that we are in any way in need of anything particularly, because I do believe that we do a great job in supporting our students. And I think you can see that, you know, even just in some short-term gains, we're seeing some excellent growth in our students, especially, you can't see this because it's very small, but in terms of our outcomes in 2018, we did start to see a nice upward trajectory, especially at the elementary level. And we look forward to seeing that continuing throughout the course of the years. But that is, in large part, due to the generous support that Watertown has for its students in our schools. And that is it.
Questions, comments, thoughts from the committee?
Relative district wealth, just for...
Pardon?
The relative district wealth, so I'm just going to say those numbers.
Oh.
Curious as to what he's got for that.
That's a very good question.
Where is that?
It's the, sorry.
She does need to know the district wealth, so I'm just looking at the, like, looking at, right, so we have a cost of $28,000.
It is.
I'm curious as to what that means.
It's a Desi chart, I'd be kind of curious.
I know it's a Desi chart.
No, I'm just trying to figure who the, like, who wrote it, who the audience is. I did not come up with 159%. I honestly, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to hang my hat on the fact that it has to do with net school spending and, you know, our ability to fund our schools above our net school spending, which is part of the foundation formula. But Heidi, I'm not putting you on the spot, do you have a?
Sorry, I was looking it up.
Okay, Heidi's going to look it up.
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah, I really feel like it has something to do with net school spending. And I will get the answer by the public hearing on the 1st, and make sure that I have a good answer for you, Lily. You guys are Googling as we speak.
Yeah, but there's an asterisk there, but we don't have the...
Yeah, there's no footnote.
Okay, you can check, look that up. Other questions or thoughts from, yeah, Eileen?
So, just to remind you, on page 36, there's an offset of $40,000 for TV production, and they requested at the last cable meeting that, again this year, someone from the administration would write a letter asking for the money so that they can release it.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay. Other questions, comments? One comment I would make is, you know, looking at the new initiatives, I think it's particularly exciting, as the superintendent said, for the coaches at the middle school. Because I think the coaches at the, my sense is, the coaches at the elementary school have been a very valuable addition, and I think that hopefully that can kind of replicate at the middle school. I think, you know, bringing the kind of other people into the classroom, working with teachers, trying to, you know, help them focus on kind of instructional strategies, I think is great.
Thank you.
Anything else? Other questions, comments? Yep.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the work that the district did to make a lot of decisions that were research-based about coaching and other issues that are really important and successful. And it was just so impressive hearing from all the schools the different kinds of detailed decisions that you were talking about, Dr. Golston, about figuring out where we really should be spending money, not just what was always done. You know, and I think that all those decisions that were made, you know, when we saw the priority ranking of all the administration team, it really was all in sync. They all understood that even though it wasn't an ask for their school, it was towards the district vision and goals. And so I think that Watertown Public Schools has done a good job getting some buy-in to that strategy, and also making decisions for how to fund it. It was well done.
Thank you.
Anything else? Nope. Okay, just again, thank you, Dr. Golston, and Ms. Perkins, and everybody else who's worked on this. So, in terms of process, again, we have the public hearing on April 1st at our school committee meeting. And then, we, our practice has been the last few years to have a separate meeting where we vote that budget, where we approve it. And I think we'll send out an email to see what, because it's actually, it wasn't, a mistake on my part, it wasn't on the calendar that we approved at the beginning of the year for school committee meetings. We have an April 1st meeting, and we have an April 22nd meeting. But April 22nd is too late, it needs to be before that. So, what we've done, we could either do it probably on the Thursday, we've done that a couple of times, or the following Monday, which would be April 8th. So, we'll send an email around and see what works best. And we may take that day, we won't, sometimes in the past, we've just simply voted it, and 10 minutes later, that's it. But I think we may take that to also look at our policies. I think we have a lot of work there to do, so we may use that meeting, if we need to, to continue the review of the policies. Okay. Any other questions, issues? Okay. Next item is the Policy Subcommittee. So, I would just say, we have, as I mentioned, we have a whole series of policies to look at, to walk through, and it will take some time, I suspect, to do some of this. And I think it's, you know, although, you know, I appreciate all the work the Subcommittee has done, and they've done a lot of great work. There, I was looking through it, and there's a couple of things in there I didn't even realize we were supposed to be doing, one or two things. So I think it will spark some questions and comments, which I think is fine. So it may take a little bit of time to go through this. We'll see how far we get. If we don't get through all of them today, we'll kind of reassess of how we want to move forward. But let me turn it over first to Eileen.
Thank you. So, there's 363 pages here. So, I don't expect to read them all. In the past, you've asked me to just say the policy number, and then...
The title.
The topic, and then see if anybody has any questions. So I'm prepared to do that, same thing again. All right, so we'll start with Section B. BA is School Committee Operational Goals. Any problems or issues? BAA, Evaluation of School Committee Operational Procedures. BB, you have one?
Let me just make a comment on this.
Sure.
So one thing that the Subcommittee did, which I actually think is a good idea, and it's a somewhat significant change, it went from periodically to annually, which implies that we are supposed to do this, which we don't always do. You know, kind of coming up with objectives, kind of school committee operational procedures, but objectives for the coming year. And so I think, to me, this is going to be the, a topic of a retreat. So, I'm not changing anything.
Right, we were supposed to do it, but according, now we're getting very specific that every year we should check to make sure that we're doing it.
Right, right.
BB, School Committee Legal Status. A lot of that is determined by the town and the state.
Right. One question here I had was eligibility. Is it, it says, "Any voter shall be eligible." Should that be any resident voter?
Do we have to be a resident to be a voter?
Well, no, voter, you can be a voter in the Commonwealth, a voter in the US.
Oh, I assumed it was any Watertown voter.
Well, I think we should say that, because that's...
So you want to add the word, "Any Watertown voter"?
Yeah, either resident or Watertown.
I mean, I think that the whole, the whole file there is very generic, like, it actually hasn't said Watertown School Committee there either, because it sounds a little bit more, I don't know, I mean, it would seem strange to me to add it under eligibility, not anywhere else on that page, because it doesn't specifically say Watertown anywhere on there. Do you need to be a voter, or do you just need to be a resident? Like, do I need to be registered to vote?
I would assume you don't have to be a voter.
I was told I had to make sure I was registered to vote when I pulled papers.
To be eligible to hold the office? I, according to this, it's within limitations established by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, established... established by law, and there are legal references, so I'm assuming, because we had this checked by our representative from MASC, that if it says, "Any voter," maybe that's true then.
Why don't we just say, "Any Watertown voter"? Would that clarify it? Then you're not a voter from another community, you're just a Watertown voter.
Yeah, we, that's fine, but you've raised the question of voter, I hadn't thought about that. I mean, what, if you're not registered to vote, you cannot run for the school committee? Is that the case? I don't, I'm, that's a question.
That's what I was told.
If she was told that by the town clerk...
Registered voter, okay.
So, shall we, do you want us to check this further, or you want to just accept that?
No, I think that's fine. I mean, at a later one, BBBA, which we come up to later, we do say resident there.
BB...
Yeah, well, we'll come to it later.
B, A.
Does it make sense to add Watertown there, so that it's clear that it's not registered voter?
Although, of course, these bylaws don't apply to anybody except people from Watertown. We can add it everywhere, but...
No, no, no.
Why don't we just check on the whether it's Watertown voter or resident?
Well, okay, so BBBA says...
And then...
You have to be a registered voter in Watertown.
Yeah, but that doesn't...
The general law website says you have to be a registered voter.
Okay, so you have to be a registered voter, but you, so that's different from a voter. In other words, you don't ever have to have voted to be a registered voter, so we should use that exact wording.
So, change it to registered voter, yeah.
Any red, do you want to say voter registered in Watertown?
I don't think it's necessary here, because that's a pretty generic description of a school committee.
Okay.
It says it later.
Registered voter. So, okay, moving on. BBA was the old language, struck down. The new language is here. School Committee Powers and Duties. Just minor changes. BBA, School Committee Member Authority. Says what our authority is and also what our authority is not. It's not anything that's not listed here. BAC, Power to Hire Administrators. We got rid of that because that, it seemed like now, accord, with the state laws, is pretty clear about whom we hire and don't hire. BBB, Number of Members and Terms of Office. That was covered already, consolidated in that previous policy. BBBA, Qualifications for School Committee Membership. So, we've already consolidated this one with the previous. BBBA and BBBB, School Committee Member Qualifications Oath of Office. And here it does say, "Registered Voter in Watertown." It's, so I think that's covered. BBBC, Struck, the old one. The new one is School Committee Membership Resignation.
In that one, there's a kind of old language in there, the second short paragraph. Should a school committee member move out of the town or district in which they hold office? So, we don't really have districts.
Got rid of that one.
Right?
Right.
So, we could take that out.
You want to take out the word district?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, this is taken from the MASC general laws, and some towns like Newton have districts that are represented by particular school committee members. Okay, BBBCA, Holding Town Office After Serving on School Committee.
The town is spelled incorrectly.
Where?
First one is, any member shall hold any office dated appointed.
Cowan.
Cowan.
Okay.
And to be clear, the reason we checked it was...
Right. BBBE, Unexpired Term Fulfillment. We just referred to following the town charter. BBBE, the old one was removed. BCA, Code of Ethics. The old one has been removed. The new one is from the MASC Association of School Committee Code of Ethics. Conflict of Interest, BCB. Be added in the word Watertown. BDA, Annual Meeting for Organization. That's what we do every January. Just gets more specific about how you do it. BDA, School Committee Organizational Meeting, the old one eliminated. BDB, Elections and Duties of Officers. Old one is gone, there's a new one. We had a question about the warrants, and we answered it because we changed the way in which we have the warrants signed.
So, that's just eight down at the, on that list?
Where are you?
Where it says warrants. Were they going to add some language there?
We, I think we later changed how the warrants would be signed. Then, did we make that a policy or procedure? I think we might have a procedure that we, that we created...
Maybe we decided to refer that to procedural, that is rather than...
So that, that's why you get to sign them, and we get to not.
Right, but so...
It's a win-win.
Number eight, where it says warrants, is that going to go away, I guess? Is that just a notation there?
Yeah.
Right.
Right? That's covered elsewhere, I guess?
Right. We could say, "See procedure."
Add the word warrants onto that, so that that would all be allocated to your duties.
We can say, yeah, duties of the chair, warrant, you're...
You are signing on behalf of all of us.
But we could add the words, "See procedure," if that would make it better.
Or just say, "Sign warrants," just, it doesn't make it consistent.
Sign warrants, okay.
And then there's just another typo in four, the second line, "All Appointment Opportunities." There's no, it shouldn't be an S there, I don't think.
S. Get rid of the S. So, that's the end of BDB. BDD, the old one is gone. The new one is School Committee Superintendent Relationship.
Wait, BDB?
BDD.
Right, but before that, BDB?
Oh, that was a page jump with the previous one.
That is the same policy we were just talking about. School Committee Officers. So, it's...
Oh, I see, it's a continuation.
It's still duties of the...
Right.
Various officers. Sure.
That's the, for the duties of the vice chair and the secretary, that is standard MASC language, so I'm just wondering why it's being changed.
We don't have a clerk, for one thing, so we put the word secretary. And I guess the language didn't cover, "Perform other duties as may be delegated," because everybody on the committee performs other duties as delegated.
It's just standard MASC language, so I just didn't...
We just felt that everybody gets called upon from time to time to do something that the chair requests, so...
Well, I think that's true, although I think, you know, kind of just in general, vice chairs, or lieutenant governors, or, you know, assistant mayors, whatever, usually have in their responsibilities to kind of support the chair in whatever way the chair wants them to, or, you know, and so...
Well, I would hope we would all support the chair.
Right.
That's precisely why we struck that line.
Right.
Was because the idea was that they're tackling amongst all members after the chair, so there should not be a special designation specifically about the role and the duties of the vice chair, because nowhere else in any language do they have a different job description than any other member of the school committee.
The secretary has a different job description.
Because there's actually a different job description for the secretary. And they're, they are responsible for a different set of tasks. The vice chair, the one specific task that is outlined is that their job is to, in the absence of the chair, take over those roles and responsibilities. That is the only difference between the vice chair and every other member of the subcommittee.
I understand, but it's MASC language.
We've started playing with that MASC language in most of the policies, so it's not atypical for us to take the part of the policy and use what we have with the rest part of it.
We, we didn't have to adopt MASC language, we weren't required to, as long as we don't adopt something that is anti their language. In other words, we can't say something which goes against, like, a state law, but we can adopt parts of an MASC description and decide that it won't work for us. I, I think this was a philosophical point, which is that we felt that the vice chair, very specifically, that person's duty is to take over for the chair whenever that is needed, but we felt that every member should support the chair and ask, be asked, be able to be asked to do additional duties by the chair, and that it wasn't specific to the vice chair.
Also, I don't disagree, and I think we all are, asked to be on committees and serve as chairs of, I don't, I don't, I don't see why that makes it, makes the chair unable to ask everyone or anyone to...
It doesn't, but we felt this was a, the, the subcommittee had a long discussion about this, you can imagine, and what we felt was, we did not want to say that, other than the chair, that other members were closer to the chair than, you know, one than the other, or had more, I don't know, let me see how I can put this, had more influence or power than any other member, because we wanted to maintain the idea that you don't have A members and B members.
So, I guess from, there's like, so two sides, I think, to feeling, seeing that line, like, number one, I'm not entirely sure that the line that struck indicates that about the role of the vice chair, but if the idea is that the chair can and should delegate other duties or have other people to sort of support them in that role, should that be part of the description of the chair's job versus, you know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, I kind of feel like if, if that's actually what we're getting at, then rather than kind of thinking about what it means to be under that's...
Appoint subcommittees any other special appointments unless time does it permit? I mean, that's literally in that job description, that that is their job, is to appoint duties or things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think appointing subcommittees and stuff like that is a little bit different than what that line says about supporting the work, but I, I mean, I just, I kind of feel like the, the line that's being struck is, I don't, I don't necessarily think it indicates that, that it'll only be for one person, but I don't necessarily know that that particular tone of the chair asking for help with things that they're doing is reflected anywhere else in the other descriptions.
So, was it the interpretation, then, of the subcommittee, that the, it's at the discretion of the chair as to who they ask to help on what, on whatever it might be?
Right. Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so...
I mean, I think that's how it functions.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, so if that's the case, then, then I'll interpret that to understand that the, it's the discretion of the chair to ask other members to help in whatever way...
Absolutely.
Can be helpful. Including the vice chair.
Including the vice chair.
Right.
This doesn't say, "Shall not ask the vice chair." It just says, our, our, I guess, and, I don't know if Lily wants to explain this further, because she was very, she was very articulate on this during the subcommittee meeting, that she felt that she didn't want to set up a situation where every single time the chair needed something, it was automatically that the vice chair would do it.
I think that makes sense. I, I think that the language that was there, that MASC has, is, I think, pretty kind of standard legislative design language that you see, again, at kind of all levels of government, where the executive, the person who's the chair in whatever title they have, if there is a vice chair, that vice chair, or whatever their name is, assistant chair, assistant president, whatever, is usually identified as somebody who can provide support to the chair. It doesn't mean that other people can't. They certainly can, and the chair can call on other people to do that, but it's a kind of standard legislative principle.
I would agree, I would agree with that, but I think this goes with the number four under duties of the chair, which is also a change from the MASC language, if you'll notice, because it's also in red. Any other special appointments, and then, all appointments opportunities will be communicated to the full committee prior to appointments being made. I think that is part of this language change.
I think they're linked together, but that, making appointments in subcommittees, I think, is different than asking for support work. I think there is a different tone to that. I mean, I think even after the listing of special duties of these three members of the school committee, if you just said, "All members could be called upon to support the work of the chair in the school committee," would kind of cover that in a different way. I, I do think that, that bullet number four about appointing subcommittees is a bit of a, a different thing.
Yeah, what about using, just taking that language and taking it, striking it from duties of the vice chair and just putting it as a duties of the chair? And having it say, "Chair could..."
Will it sign other such duties as, as may be delegated, as may be necessary, or, okay, I can play with the words on that.
As, as a change to four, or an additional one?
As a, as an addition to, as an additional one.
Additional number?
Like, you can put number five underneath four.
Yeah. Some sort of...
Say something along those lines.
Yeah, just cut and paste some, some semblance of the language out there.
So, do you want to come up with that to present, Lily, at the next meeting? So, we're going to add, at this time, I'm going to call it four A, but it'll probably become five?
Yeah, it'll become five, I'll just...
Okay. And then we'll vote on that at the next meeting.
So, the essence of that would be to, that the chair can ask other members to provide support, in essence? Is that the idea?
Yeah.
Right, because it is a duty of the chair to delegate.
Right.
It is the duty of all the members to do the things that the...
So, I'm trying to find out why that should be under the chair's duties and not the school committee. You're here, the school committee members are there to support.
Absolutely, and it's only because this list...
So, why are we putting it on the chair and not as a role of the school?
This BDB is School Committee Officers.
You know what you could do is just, after, if you don't want to add it in the chair, say, "Duties of the vice chair, secretary," and then say, "All committee members," and then just move that language down there. So, it is, here is that the chair can, whatever the language is, it says that any, any school committee member performs, does may be delegated or assigned. I think that's what your intent is.
I think, I think you can play with the wording on a lot of this. I also think it's important to keep the integrity of the idea that all appointments and or opportunities will be communicated to the full school committee prior to appointments being made, is also within the language of duties or anything being assigned, and that this is not, it's not simply a, you're going to go do this and they are required to go do that, but that it's a conversation and that this is an equitable committee, so...
But, but...
Let me play with the language.
But that's, that's...
I, I took a lot of notes about what everyone's looking for. I think, I, would be, if I redraft and send it out to everybody, that's probably the best way to have it, so that someone else is sitting here, spending the next fifteen minutes talking about where we're at, because I think, I need to play with the verbiage. I, I hear what everybody's saying, and I can come up with a couple of different ways to phrase things.
But my, my comment would be that, that if you, if it's restrictive in the sense that the chair cannot delegate or ask another committee member to take on a task without approval of the full school committee, the, the chair is going to be hamstrung, won't be able to do anything. I mean, that will, that...
But that's why I said only the opportunities will be communicated, not the decisions.
Well, that... Well...
Like, the way that he does it, like a search, right, email out to everybody.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's what we're talking about, about people being aware.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is that I don't know exactly how, like, in terms of duties or all that, is this like an opportunity thing, where, I guess, the word opportunity versus duties gets confusing, right? Because what are our duties versus what are opportunities? That's why I'm saying the verbiage on this lacks some clarity.
So, there's little things like, what if, you know, John sends out his school committee update, and he asks me or someone else on the committee to...
Post it.
No, to edit it or post it. Is that something that has to go to the full school committee, say, or...
That's what I'm saying, so that's what I'm saying, is playing with the words.
Right, that's what I should make sure we're...
Because what are the tasks versus duties versus...
Yes.
That's why I get to play with the words, because I think that there's a lack of clarity about what means what, and we want to not hamstrung the chair, but also make sure that the bigger pieces are given to all. So, I think, I will play with this, rework it, kind of, set it.
All right.
Okay, are we done with BDB? BDD, school committee superintendent relationship. We just added Watertown, and we're, throughout, we're changing, whenever it says his or her, we're changing it to their.
That's the entire policy handbook.
Yeah. BDE, subcommittees of the school committee. You see the changes. It's nothing that we don't already do. BDEB, representation of external committees. So, for example, the building committee is an external committee. BDF, advisory committees. It may be that, at one point, when you were considering the school committee compensation issue, you might have been considering a special ad hoc advisory committee, so we've now changed it just to be more in tune with the law and reminding people that it's open meeting. School councils, BFA, we're getting rid of the old language and putting in the shortened new language, which follows the law. BFAE, the old one is gone. BFAE1, school improvement plan, this is a new thing. I believe that also, BFAE2, submission and approval of the school improvement plan. These are both new.
These are state laws now, aren't they?
Yes. So, but I just wanted to point them out, because they are new to us, that we should be aware that they are now in existence, right? BFAE3, conduct of school council business, same deal, new but state law. BDG, services of legal counsel, has been changed to the new language and is called school attorney. BTH has been eliminated, professional and consultant services. That is not really something that should be covered in the policy handbook. That is part of the job of the superintendent and her staff. School committee meetings, BE.
I had a question.
Yes.
This one, on number three, it's not clear to me, the last sentence, the 24-hour meeting notice, I'm not sure what that is, and the 48-hour circulated agenda rule, I don't know what the reference is there, so I'm not, it's confusing, I'm not clear what's going on there.
I believe...
Oh, this is a situation, you kept talking about the B, the B...
Yeah, explain.
I think basically where this came from was that the chair needs to be able to handle emergency topics that are going to come up. There are actually legal requirements around that, and so we got some back and forth on this. And the idea that an emergency meeting, it must be, has to be immediate, und delayed action, and that it must be happening, like, it has to be happening in less than 24-hour time span. Then we, you need, this is actually specific of what you need in order to call that emergency meeting, which is any two members of the committee and a notice of an emergency. And we got all this, I don't remember where we got this, U.I., but we got this from, we did not independently break this. I believe it's...
No.
No.
There are, so normally, to call an emergency meeting, see, for a regular meeting, you have the posting notice, right?
Right.
And that has to be a certain number of days. But then there might be an emergency situation, you can call it with a 24-hour meeting notice and 48-hour circulated agenda. But then there are occasions when it might be such an immediate emergency, that's why it's called an emergency, that you cannot wait this time period in order to call this meeting and act. This is for that situation. Mark?
An emergency situation is if the Hosmer school burns down.
Exactly. You're not going to wait 48...
You're allowed to have this type of a meeting.
Exactly.
You don't need any notice, you don't need...
You've got to...
That constitutes an emergency.
You can deal with that.
Yes.
Remember, certainly by the ready notice, yes, we have to call an emergency meeting, we're covered, and then I need decisions made or valid, and not hit violation of the meeting.
So, I understand the idea of the emergency. The last sentence is the language that's a little confusing to me. So, and I think this is driven by state law, I believe, so...
Yes. So, the state law specifies the 24-hour meeting notice and the 48-hour circulated agenda, but there are occasions, as Mark Sedaris just said, the Hosmer school burns down, there's some reason why you must immediately act, and you cannot wait.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So, the, but 24-hour meeting notice, I'm not aware of a 24-hour meeting notice requirement.
Is that not part of the open meeting law, that under...
It's 48 hours.
All right, then that must be a mistake, because the whole idea is, there's regular meeting...
Right.
Special meeting, emergency meeting.
Yeah, so if you make it 48...
That's fine.
Then it makes sense, because, I mean, the circulated agenda, it...
That's 48 too, but it's the same thing.
That's 48, it's the same thing as the meeting notice.
Right, okay. So, we'll change that to 48.
Yeah, okay.
Our whole goal in this policy is to allow the business to be done when it needs to be done.
Right, no, I understand that, that's fine.
And BEA, regular school committee meetings, and then BEB, special, and then that, those are gotten rid of, because now we have this other policy. BEC, executive sessions. The old ones are gotten rid of, and the new ones are before you.
Executive sessions are dictated by the open meeting law...
Right.
And don't necessarily have to be in our policy, because it's a state law. All you have to say here is you have to follow state law to conduct an executive session. I'm just trying to...
I'm happy to do that. Anything that makes it shorter is fine with me.
Well, I mean, I agree with that, Mark, although that's true for probably at least half of this document. I mean, we repeat state law all the time.
I understand, but this is kind of special.
It is, it is.
Executive session is very, very specific and very critical, that state law be followed, because there are certain rules.
And they can change it.
Right.
In which case, this doesn't matter anymore.
Right.
Change it.
I just have concerns about, because there are some specific reasons you go into executive session, it's critical that we follow state law, because that could change.
Well, it does say in the second sentence, the committee has the right to convene in a closed executive session when it meets the following procedural conditions imposed by state law. So, you would have to change this if the state law changed. I think the idea of concluding this was so that people in the district, trying to look up our policy, wouldn't have to then go and hunt it down elsewhere. I don't mind doing it either way, what is your suggestion?
I just think it becomes a cumbersome policy to change this if there's a change to the state law. I'm not anticipating that, but because we have to send it to the subcommittee and have two hearings about it, it just becomes, if there's a need to have an executive session, I would just respectfully...
Well, we can just say...
You point to where they could find it in the open, the state's open meeting law.
Maybe we just link to state law.
Okay.
Right.
So, change that second sentence to, this committee has the right to convene in a closed executive session when it meets the procedural conditions imposed by state law. And then that way, whatever the law is, we're in compliance.
That makes sense.
So, get rid of the word "following." That was BEC. Now, we're on to BEDA. We're eliminating the old notification of school committee meetings, and we're moving to the current state law. BDB, agenda for regular meetings, out with the old and with the new.
Two comments there. The first line, I think what you mean at the end of it is to say superintendent.
Where are you?
The first line.
Of the new, oh, I see.
Chair of the Watertown School Committee conferring with the superintendent.
Yes.
Didn't add in the new...
Oh, they didn't add that in, okay.
And so, I would just propose, if people wanted to add something, which is a practice that I've started to do, which you could include here if we wanted to, and it would be basically a sentence like, you know, "A draft agenda will be circulated among committee members at least 24 hours prior to being posted."
Well, here it says three days, three business days. And it also says, "Any school committee member, staff member, or citizen may suggest items of business."
Where does it say three business days?
If you look further, the third paragraph is the one about the discretion of the chair to accept any suggestions, and the fifth paragraph says, "No less than three business days when possible, prior to the meeting, to permit adequate time to prepare for the meeting." So...
Oh, that's, that's the, that's like, if we have a Monday meeting, it comes, we get an email on Friday.
Yeah.
Are you, you're talking about the chair, are you talking about the chair distributing it to the school committee for review before it gets posted?
Right.
Yeah, it says right here, "Will be distributed to school committee members, no less than," because you don't want a situation where you're only getting the agenda on the day of the meeting, you haven't had time to figure out some things.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I think John is saying something different, he's saying distributing the draft agenda. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I was talking about a draft, so, I mean, you're right in that that sentence kind of gets at the same, because it says three business days, which is, which is beyond the 48 hours. So, that does say, that is another day.
Yeah, that's not a posting, that is, so that would be for the purpose of letting the school committee weigh in, because then we can suggest items of business, according to the third paragraph. I think what you're doing is currently your policy as chair to do that...
Right.
But that has not always been the practice of past chairs.
That's right, and so I was wanting, but...
So, you're wanting to make your practice the policy?
Or would you say at least a draft agenda?
Right.
Something along the lines, if it doesn't have to be the final formal agenda, that three days out, John, is that what you're concerned about?
Yeah, well...
This one said...
You get to us well before that.
That's, yeah. Right now, I feel very well informed. I will say, this one says also, along with supporting materials, it is not always possible for us to get all the supporting materials three days prior to the meeting, and that...
There does say when possible.
Yeah.
When possible, right. That's fine. I mean, you know, I mean, in some ways, the idea of a draft agenda, it doesn't use the word "draft," but the idea is there in that short paragraph. So, it really depends on the chair, how they interpret that...
Yeah.
Because they could interpret it a little bit differently, if they take it to mean agenda that is ready to be posted, rather than a draft. When I circulate something earlier in the week, it's a draft that can be changed. Once you post it, it's harder to change.
Mark?
I do think that we do oftentimes, and more often than we think, follow past practices. So, I think your practice that has been put in place is a past practice that will carry on, if, you know, so I don't think, I don't think you necessarily have to state it, but, you know, it's a good way to inform the committee of what's coming up, and they could make changes, and it's a thought that the chair put in, and I think we, you don't need to have a specific policy for that.
Okay, that's fine.
Eliminated BEDBE, agenda format. BEDC, quorum. We wanted to, although you have to have a quorum to call the meeting to order and do business, but there are times when somebody has to leave a meeting, and you don't want to have to adjourn the meeting if the group remaining can do the business. BEDD, conduct of meetings, refers to following Robert's Rules of Order, the laws of the Commonwealth, et cetera. BEDD, the old one, eliminated. BEDF, voting method, the old one, eliminated. Just tells you voting methods, whether you're going to do it with your hand, with your voice, when you need two-thirds, when you need a majority. BEDG, minutes, just added the word Watertown, changed the legal reference. BEDH, public participation at school committee meetings, I think this has pretty much not Got rid of the old one, got rid of the old BEDHE. I think we felt we were getting very prescriptive about how citizens should be able to participate. BEDI, newspapers and other news media. So, this may also need further change later. Social media is kind of a new field for us, and we haven't yet really grappled completely with it, but this is what we have. BEDL, adjournment time for meetings. You have until 11 o'clock for this meeting, John.
But we could go beyond if we need to.
If we need to.
There it's spelled.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, is it?
Good luck with that. BEE, special procedures for conducting hearings. This is all legal. BG, functioning as a policymaking body, got rid of the old. The new one is in terms of the law. BGB, policy adoption, nothing surprising. Policy revision and review, BGC. Got rid of the old BGD and got a new one, school committee review of procedures. So, some of the procedures we were talking about, we may wish to occasionally review, but ordinarily, if we're all happy and it's working, that's fine. Policy dissemination, BGE, new one. Which, we're also looking to have the policy manual put online. We're getting bids for printing it. I don't know if it's bids or quotes, I think there's a, but whatever's legal. So, eventually, our hope is, when we've made all our revisions here, that it'll be online, and then citizens will be able to access this much more easily. BGF, suspension of policies, the new language. BHC, school committee staff communications. What it means by "keep here" eliminated GBD, it was redundant, we had it also in section GBD, so we just eliminated that and decided it should be here. We had it also in Section GBD, so we just eliminated that and decided it should be here. BHE, we got rid of the old electronic messaging and have the new language. It's legal, but it's also difficult because it recalls for some judgment. BIA New School Committee Member Orientation. I don't remember if we have done it, but we obviously ought to do it. Just tells what, what things they should get, and what conversations they should have, what information they should get. So the old BIA is out. BIBA School Committee Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops. Think pretty much this happens. BID. Here's the compensation item.
I would suggest we change this to say salary, to be consistent with the council, with the town charter.
I wonder if that has any tax implications?
Well-
I don't know. I'm asking.
It says here, it's taxable stipend, so.
Right, so it's, they're calling it both a stipend and-
Compensation.
Yeah, compensation. I just-
Salary according to the charter, stipend according to the-
Right. I don't know the answer to this question. We can ask? Why don't we ask?
When I'm conferring with the attorney about salary, I will ask her to review this.
Okay, so the question is salary slash compensation slash stipend slash. So we want to know, before we, we want to be consistent, but before we change it, we want to know if there are legal implications for the change. Okay? BID is the old one. BJ School Committee Legislative Program. Be aware of what's going on at the state level. BK School Committee Memberships, we got rid of it. We thought people make their own minds up about whether they want to belong to different organizations. Now, why, I think that's it for B. The reason B took so long is it's directly referring to how we do our jobs. And so even in the subcommittee, it took a long time to go through it. So we will make some of those changes. We'll get some new language on various things, and then we'll consider this again at the second meeting. And because we're, we could vote, I wonder if people who are writing the new language could get it out to us sooner rather than later, so we have time to really think about it. All right, are we moving on to Section D? Is everyone all excited? Fiscal Management Goals, DA, not a big change. DB Annual Budget, we've just been going through that. This reflects what we do. DBC, there's new language again. This was most, yeah?
On that one, well, correct me how you want this done, Mark, but the third paragraph, the final, whatever dates are assigned, the final date for the submission of the budget to the, we formally submit it to the town manager, not really-
I think it should say the town manager.
Yeah, we should say the town manager.
Yes.
Where are you, which?
The third paragraph down.
Third paragraph.
Budget, budget to the town manager?
Yes.
All of them should say the town manager.
Oh, yeah, both.
Yeah, and the next paragraph.
So everywhere where it says town council, we put in town manager?
Yep, yep.
Okay. So that's three, three times we're changing it.
And then in that, that third paragraph, so if you say, "submission of the budget to the town manager will be arranged cooperatively with the Watertown School Committee and Finance Committee." We don't need that. I think that's a town thing. And then that next sentence, "The town council has authority to impose a date as early as December 31st?" Again, I don't, that doesn't make any sense. I think that's a town thing, town government thing.
That would be a challenge if it's-
Take that whole sentence out.
In December, we don't do anything.
Happy to get rid of it.
So just strike that sentence.
Get rid of that.
Seems like an unreasonable way. And Finance Committee.
And Finance Committee.
You should just end right where it says Watertown School Committee.
Period. And get rid of "and Finance Committee" above it?
Everything after Watertown School Committee.
Says, "Established by law and charter." I wonder if this is part of the charter. DBD Budget Planning. We're doing it. Old ones out, DBG, DBJ Budget Transfer Authority, new language. Heidi, you may have been part of this discussion in the policy subcommittee, so I'm assuming that, and you were certainly consulted, and I'm assuming this is all okay with you. DD Funding Proposals and Applications. DF is Control Over Internal Funds. This, we have a new procedure that we do, and we want to leave it up to the administration if they want to change the internal fund controls in some way, to have the freedom to do that. DFG Extracurricular Fees were part of that. Technology Trust, we don't have it anymore.
Can I just ask on the Technology Trust, just a question, is there a balance in that account?
No.
No, okay.
That we-
We created, I remember creating.
We created it. It was going to become something. It never did. There are no funds in it, and it doesn't exist anymore.
Okay.
DGA Authorized Signatures, all of this refers to this control over these internal funds, which we now have various procedures. If you look at the DGA, that whole, Jim was a member of MASC who came when Dorothy couldn't come. So that's irrelevant and not part of our policy handbook. Bonded Employees DH and Officers. DI Fiscal Accounting and Reporting. DID Inventory of School Property is out. DIE Audits of School Funds is new. DJ Purchasing, DJA Purchasing Authority. DJC Petty Cash Accounts Central Office. DJE Bidding, all of this is, is now, there are all these rules, laws, procedures, et cetera. It includes the town hall, includes the state, so we're just wanting to be in compliance with all of that.
Is a petty cash account allowed? Is it? Okay, because I-
It's illegal, but best practice is to seed it at the beginning of fiscal year or the school year, and then close it at the end of the year.
Okay.
Have to, but that is best practice of what we would do.
Okay.
So you have, the only one I can think of is, we seed the cash box for the gate receipts. We have a check made out to put money in there so that they can make change for the games, and then that's turned in at the end of the year and closed back in.
So DJG Vendor Relations, that's not really part of school committee policy. DK Payment Procedures, there's a new one.
Oh, wait, just a second.
Yes.
Where did you go? Oh, DK. Back on DJE.
DJE.
Procurement Requirements. Is it?
Bidding, yeah. Now changed to procurement, yeah.
So the, one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph? "The committee reserves the right to reject any or all bids." Do we, we have the authority to do that?
Heidi?
I would imagine that you have the authority. It's not usually passed to the school committee. It's usually in the finance director puts up the bids.
Yeah, okay.
Follows. I mean, it's pretty much standard state law on how those have to be done anyway.
But we have the-
So a request for bid is the responsive and responsible bidder-
Right.
-with the lowest price on a bid. Because there are also RFQs and RFPs and other things that are not a bid, the request for proposals. You don't have to go with the lowest bidder on those. But it's, the school committee's not usually involved.
Right, not usually involved, right.
They're not usually involved in this at all.
Right, right, okay.
I imagine.
Okay.
Okay. DJG Vendor Relations over. DK Payment Procedures. There's a new one. DKC. Expense Reimbursements. Again, all of this is according to the law.
Where are you at, Eileen?
I'm on DKC Expense Reimbursements.
So I see I have a question here.
Excuse me.
Third paragraph. So-
This is MASC General Laws, and we wanted to add that the superintendent could have a designee who approves these requests.
So the issue, you know, to the extent budgeted for such purposes of the school budget, approval of travel requests by school committee members must have prior approval of the school committee. So that's one where, just logistically, that could be kind of problematic at times. And I'll give you a real small example of it. I think for the last two summers, I went to MASC workshop out in, you know, on 495 somewhere, and it was like, I don't know, $75 or something like that, and to register for it. I didn't ask for any travel expenses, but just to register. And so we registered for it. But, I mean, I, you know, I would have had to, if I had planned far enough in advance, I suppose I could have asked for school committee approval. But I just think that, you know, my suggestion there would be to give some flexibility to the chair to approve something like that, and then have the chair report such expenditures at the next school committee meeting.
To have the chair be allowed to make, to give approval for other members?
Yes.
Travel requests?
Yeah, yeah. And that, then they report to the school committee at the next meeting. What we probably should do, along with that, which we haven't consistently done, is put a dollar amount in the budget for school committee expenses, travel expenses.
I believe that this, I'm looking at this. This is not for school committee travel expenses. This section appears to be for, it says Personnel and School Department Officials.
Says school committee.
Which is not school committee.
It says approval of travel requests by school committee members.
Right, no, but it's not travel for, in other words, it's not for travel by school committee.
It says travel by.
Is it?
It says approval of travel requests by school committee members must be prior, have prior approval of the school committee. It sounds like it's-
Oh, I see, that's what the third, all right, third paragraph. It does. So, so what would you, how would you like to change that?
Well, I would just consider adding to the end of that first sentence a, "Must have prior approval of the school committee chair," period. And then, "The chair will report such expenditures at the next school committee meeting." And then, if we wanted to, the way to kind of put a cap on that, in a way, is to, is to create an expense line, which we probably should do, an expense line within the budget for school committee expenses like this. And so that tells the school committee chair, you can't go over that. You can't go over that without, you know, asking for, you know, additional approval to move the money around. That's all.
So actually, there's three things in this one paragraph. One is approval of travel requests by school committee members, which are within, that they have been budgeted for. Second is staff travel requests within budgetary limits. And the third is staff travel requests that exceed the budgetary limits. So it's three different things in this one paragraph.
Yeah, kind of a lot in there, but I'm just focused on the school committee sentence, which is the first sentence. The rest of it actually doesn't deal with school committee. It's staff travel requests-
Right, exactly.
Which goes to the superintendent.
And isn't that, isn't that, it's not in the contract too? So why is it in our policy?
In terms of reimbursement?
Yeah.
No.
See, it does seem kind of odd.
Right?
No, what do you say?
Well, there's, there's language in the contract about-
Her travel expenses.
Traveling.
But this, but this isn't her travel expenses. This is staff travel, this is all staff travel.
But that's in their contract too.
The teacher contract.
I think that's right.
Are we using it here? I don't, I'm not sure.
I kind of feel like this sort of sounds like it's all about school committee travel, and then all of a sudden, there's a staff part in there that doesn't-
It's, it's like a combination of many things, right?
First of all, this is a, this is really a school committee issue. And the superintendent would have to approve any travel of her staff anyway.
Right.
That shouldn't be, that's not our policy. That would be her issue to deal with.
Right.
I will say that, you know, coming to the school committee is a good idea. Like, if you want to go, if you're going to the MASC in November, people know in February, March, April, May, that they're going. But I also would say that we should have a line item for our budget, if, you know, for expenses. This also ties to what the charter said. Because if, if everybody just starts going to every conference possible, this could end up costing the school budget, you know, hundreds and hundreds of dollars that are unanticipated. So I do think there should be a cap. I know on the council, we had a cap. We removed the cap because there was really, people weren't even spending, you know, the money.
Which would be true here. We, no one's, no one-
Right, so, I mean, we're spending-
Is this president-determined or is it done by the individual members?
The individual member would, would submit it to the town auditor to see if it would be approved. Like, we had a counselor-
Who approves?
The town, the town auditor.
The auditor approves, not the, not the council?
No.
So maybe you just have-
No, I, we have, I give you an example, one of the, just like you used. A counselor approached me and said they wanted to go to a specific conference. It was $200. I brought it to the town auditor. The town auditor approved it. We used to have a budget item that said council expenses, and it was $300 per person. It was $2,700. It went so many years without being used that we actually removed it and created a situation where you would check with the auditor to see if the funds were available. But very few people use it.
So if we, if we kind of mirrored that process, then probably, if people are more comfortable, the approval would be the superintendent rather than me, if they're more comfortable with that.
I would say, I would think so.
But I think it's problematic to have the full school committee, because you just, you don't have-
I would say that the superintendent, you know.
If you have a limit.
That's fine. So-
All right, so-
A travel request within the budgetary limits may be approved by the superintendent, so.
That's, that's-
If we're not creating a separate line item, then the superintendent and Heidi should know-
If you want to go to a conference in Chicago, it should sit in front of all of us, so.
Should we be separating this into staff and school personnel expenses, and then school committee?
I would just say which also, because I-
Yes, that's what I-
And honestly, I mean, not against my ideas, but I just-
And it doesn't seem like the staff should be in there at all.
The members and general staff.
It's all, yeah.
Why don't we take this back and do a rewrite on this one?
I second that.
Okay, good.
Okay. Lily, are you taking this on? Many thanks. DKC. DN, this is the current, the current school assets disposal procedure, which is now part of the policy. And I believe that's the end of Section D.
Oh, ooh.
Hey.
That was my computer.
Thank you. Section F, as in Frank. FA Provision of School Buildings, which has become Facilities Development Goals. FAE, part of it has been, or F has been removed. We're just trying to get up to speed on things in compliance with the law. FB Facilities Planning. FCB Retirement of Facilities. Getting rid of the old FF Naming of Schools- Getting rid of the old FF, naming of school buildings and putting in the new. Sometimes in the past, this has been an issue, not lately. FFA, this is new for Watertown. Memorials. This is physical memorials within or on school property. GA, this is also new, personnel policies, goals. GBA, equal employment, obviously we got rid of it because it's part of the law. We've got the new language. GBD deleted here, but kept in Section B because it was redundant. GBEA, staff ethics, you'll remember that was. GBEA, staff ethics, so, again, this is according to the law. GBEB, staff conduct, legal. GBEBB, after a while, we were trying to say these policies as words, and it was, it was difficult sometimes. GBEBB, responsibility for supervision of classes. We tried to have it reflect what would be, on the one hand, workable, on the other hand, good educational policy.
So I had a question on this one.
Yes.
First of all, I, I don't, it seems to me that, I don't know why we really have something like this, because this is really the superintendent's responsibility, I don't know that we really need this. But the second paragraph, I did, the, you know, the phrasing is, to me, is, is a little awkward. You know, should it be necessary for the teacher to be absent from a class, the teacher shall make specific arrangements with another staff member to take responsibility for the class in their absence.
This is not for, you're going to be absent all day. This is, I have to go out and take a phone call, I have to meet with, you know.
I have to run and pick them up in the last period.
You can't just leave your class unattended.
Well, I guess my point would, to me, that's, that ought to be, but it doesn't say that. I mean, if, if I take a, a broad reading of this, I could say, well, I'm going to miss a day, and so I'll arrange my own coverage.
All class though, not like a class.
See, I read it like that too, because I was thinking elementary.
Yeah, but like if, yeah, like a class though, like in elementary schools all day. I mean, it is a little bit ambiguous.
So I did, I did read it like a whole day too.
So do you want to switch up the language? John, what do you think would make sense, like a class?
Well, my, my point is that the superintendent and the principals have a process for this. If you're going to miss, you know, if you're, if the teacher's going to miss class, there is a process they need to follow. And why are we giving them a possibility of a different process here?
Because it's meant, this is obviously meant for a brief period of time during the day. This is.
But even, even that, even that, I think that should be the principal and the superintendent, not looking to some policy that we have and say.
Okay.
Say, you know, I'm gonna, so I would just, I mean, I.
Eliminate the whole policy?
And then the, the principal hadn't allowed it or hadn't approved it. And that's why we kept it.
But then they can go back and say, but the policy says you can do it. It, it, it actually protects the principals, the, the rules of the school to not have it in there. Because then, the rules are clear, it's the principal's rules about how they, how he or she handles it.
And it seems like if you take out the, the whole middle paragraph and just say it's up to the principals, there's no need for the policy altogether.
Well, you could just say, you know, should it be necessary for the teacher to be absent from a class, the teacher shall make specific arrangements according to the, you know, procedures develop, created by the principal and the superintendent.
But I would say, but why is it a policy at all? I mean, it just seems like it's like that language is in their contract as what their job is in, I don't know, doesn't seem like the policy is necessary.
That's why I say I don't think you need the policy at all. Yeah, I don't, I don't think you need it, but.
I will defer to the judgment of the professional teachers on the, on this. Yeah.
You wanted to have it in?
I, I did.
Oh.
The, the reason being, and, and I think you're right about maybe changing the wording a little bit about, maybe just making it, no classroom shall ever be left unattended. I think by putting it in policy, we can follow it up with the, the staff handbook. The, the main concern always is making sure that no students are ever left alone without supervision. And I think by, if it's by policy, it helps to enforce the fact that it's not just the school department that says that you need to do this, this is a school committee policy as well.
So what if you said just no class can ever be left unattended?
Unattended, yeah. It's like, more clear.
Okay, on it, so we're simplifying this, just to do simplicity as best, and we're going to use something along the lines of no classroom left unattended?
Yeah, and then they can deal with implementation.
Yep, that makes sense.
But, but you need to say that they will be, because if you just leave it at that, then it's, you know, that no classroom will be unattended, that, if I'm a teacher, and I could just say, okay, you know, I'll, I'll have my friend next door, we'll cover the class, and I won't even tell the principal about it, I'm going to go, I have to go do something for one, you know, for one hour, I'll have my friend cover the class, I don't think principals want that to happen.
So, so they're.
You do have to do that sometimes, John. Like, just functionally as a teacher, there are times when you open a door and you ask somebody to watch your class because you have to go to the bathroom, or you don't go to the principal's. As long as, as soon as you put that language in, you're being overly prescriptive. Because again, that would then say that every time I needed to go to the bathroom, if I didn't walk down to my dean's office, inform my dean that I was going to the bathroom. That's over, like, that's what I'm saying, is that you have to be careful. I think that that's why we were trying to put in some length of time, which is why I think we looked at a class, which makes sense in secondary, but obviously not supposed to be elementary level. But there does need to be some, some more verbiage in there about that, because otherwise, it really would be, every time you go out to the bathroom, you're going to drink water or answer a phone call for thirty seconds, you wouldn't be able to do that without going to the line with the principal.
What if you just said something like, no class will be left unattended, and teachers will follow the, you know, or staff will follow the policy of the school? So is that, is that what?
For absences.
Is that both intent and not, not too prescriptive?
I'd like to hear from Dr. Goldstone on this.
I would, I would probably prefer not to say, and defer to the policy of the school, because then we have wildly fluctuating policies around that. Meaning, it's something that comes up often, like, one, one principal says it's okay to leave for two hours, and another one says it's not, so we're working on that internally. There is contractual language that says that, you know, principals can grant up to two hours of discretionary leave. That is contractual, so I think there already is a mechanism, if I'm going to be gone for an hour, I have to arrange that with the principal. But I, to Lily, and I think Lindsay's point, you know, as a teacher, there are times when I have to take five minutes to go do something, and I don't tell the principal, I just open the door next door and say, please make sure you have eyeballs on my classroom. But if it's not clearly stated, I hate to say it, I think that sometimes some well-intentioned teacher might not do that, and then you've left your classroom unattended. I like it as a, as a policy, because I think it gives it some serious emphasis, that it's not just a, you can't just, well, this time, I'm going to go ahead and run out for five minutes, no, 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 no. I, I'd like to have our, our staff handbook supported by policy whenever possible, so.
Maybe you say something, you know, to be absent from a class for an extended period, or something like that.
Why don't they redraft something and run it by the superintendent, and then we can.
Yeah, I'll, we have a couple of them.
Yes, great.
Yeah, I think it's important to run this by DeeDee. GBEBC, this, this actually is a change a little bit. You can't give gifts, and it says in a calendar year. So I can't give a gift to my child's teacher twenty dollars worth at one time, and then the next month, a gift that's twenty, and then the next month, twenty, because that's more than the fifty dollars per calendar year from any single person.
Yeah, this is state law, these are.
Right, but I think people are sometimes not aware that it's cumulative in a calendar year.
Turn it on.
Need to turn it on.
Okay. Sometimes we just highlight it because we want to make people aware. GCGB eliminated, because that's covered, that's not really school committee policy responsibility for substitutes. This one was a problem. GBEBD, online fundraising and solicitations crowdfunding. We had a long discussion of this, multiple meetings, yeah. It was problematic, because it happens. Hey, I'm running in the blah blah road race, I hope you'll support me, can't do it on school mail. Hey, parents of so-and-so, if you can donate Kleenex, no, can't do it. It's very complex, and we really had this conversation in depth.
And this really is going to be a shift, so I think that it's important that we just recognize that for the public as well, which is that we really are changing the way that staff members may choose to solicit money. And I think that it's just something that is timely right now, as we're seeing more and more people use crowdfunding in order to get things, that we are aware of what's happening, and it's just the idea that really anything needs to go through the principal's or the superintendent's.
There's a reason, and the major reason is so that there's no feeling that certain students are getting more attention because there's a closer relationship between that student's family and the teacher. There's also a need to keep administrative awareness of what's going on in the different classrooms. And if you're soliciting the public for money for something, the administration needs to approve that. It's something that we all don't think about in our private lives, but it really now has to become a school committee policy, and I think this is something that maybe needs to go in the employee handbook for a reference to it, because I'm sure that there are specifics in here that people are not aware of. Okay? GBEBD, it goes on to say that the, the things that you solicit become the property of the school committee and not of the individual employee who solicited the funds. Okay? So, GBEC, drug-free workplace policy. Some of this obviously is the law, but we thought it was good to spell it out. Again, there are many things in this handbook, this policy handbook, which are the law, but we don't expect everybody to memorize everything if they have a place to look it up. GBED, there's a new one about tobacco use by staff members on school property. School property includes parking lots and at schools sponsored events. GBEF, staff cellular and personal communication services. This is a new policy that I, that we took up at the request of the superintendent. And I believe you've, have you already put this into action? Didn't, didn't we, did we not approve this already?
I, I believe you did, and yes, I have, today I got my phone, so, took a while.
GBGB, sounds like a club. Staff personal security and safety. GBGE, domestic violence leave policy.
Is, is this one rooted in state law? I assume, I guess it is.
Domestic violence and equality?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's not something that's bargained? We bargain all kinds of leave things, you know, personal leave, career.
Yeah, we're not, this is not a contractual thing that we, this came up with on our own. It's just state law. And it's very specific. GBGF, family and medical leave, again, we're part of the government here. GBI, staff participation in political activities. So this comes up sort of without people thinking about it. We had a bit of discussion about this. We, we thought about, you know, are you wearing a button or a shirt for somebody to school when you teach?
Well, and we talked about the, the issue of First Amendment rights of the staff compared to whether or not they'd be violating our policy, and talking about the interplay of the First Amendment, and how that could possibly be impacted by this particular policy. And we were very careful to draft it in a way that made sure that we did not want to violate any staff members' rights, while also making sure that students would feel completely safe and supported in their classrooms.
Right, we just didn't want to feel anyone, that anyone was feeling pressured, and that school system facilities were not being used. That does include the internet, the school mail, so people should be aware of that. GBI, it was changed therefore. GBJ, personnel records. This is also covered by the law. GBK, staff complaints and grievances. Probably a lot of this is covered in the contracts. GBL, recognition of employees' procedures. I think we do these things. Crossed out GCA, GTA, establishment of positions, and replaced it with GCA professional staff positions. It's not a new position that the superintendent has the power to hire people. And that positions can be created or dismissed by the superintendent. GCBA, professional staff salary schedules, this is all collective bargaining stuff, why is it in this policy handbook? So we have professional staff salaries, simply saying that it's. Well, actually, one of the issues is the things around the, the guidelines for the superintendent. So for example, we may give, consider, she may give consideration for establishing merit increases for some things special. And then she has to present that to the school committee for our recommendation. GCBAB, substitute teacher salary rates. GCBB, employment of principals. Again, it's superintendent's rights. GCBBA, compensation of interim administrators. We have at times had quite a few interim administrators. So it defines who they are and how they'll be paid, how their pay will be determined. GCBC, professional staff supplementary pay plans. That they get a supplementary contract, you know, how long you work to be a supplementary staff, et cetera. GC, what is this? Oh, this was re, GC, GBGF was recoded, staff and family and medical leave to fit the mask manual. GCE, professional staff recruiting slash posting of vacancies. We do that. GCF, professional staff hiring, changed it to be in compliance.
A typo in this one, the second line.
Second line.
The selection process will, and then the third line, it has will again.
Will, oh, will and will. I see that. Thank you. Really did go over this with a fine-tooth comb. GCFAA slash GCOAA, appointment and evaluation of coaches. GCFB, selection procedures for permanent instructional administrator positions. Got rid of the old one and just shortened it and got this new one. Part-time and special, and substitute professional staff employment, GCG. Changed according to the mask thing. Sometimes it's just the mask wording that we take. GCI, professional development for staff. Not a surprise. GCI, professional, philosophy of staff development, we.
Oh, wait a minute, Eileen.
Yes?
Sorry, I missed it. GCFBA?
GCF.
BA.
BA. Yes?
Selection procedure for acting administrative.
Yes.
So earlier we used the term interim?
Yes.
So I don't think they're different? Correct me if I'm wrong. I think they're the same, so we should be consistent about that, I guess.
Yes?
I think we decided that it would be interim throughout instead of acting.
That's fine.
So.
Okay, moving on, we're up to GCG, GCI, professional development for staff. GCI, philosophy of staff development, we got rid of it because of course we want staff development. I don't feel we have to justify it. GBJ, professional teacher status. How it works, I assume.
Just a comment, I didn't realize, you can grant professional status for someone less than three years?
I can.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yes.
And I thought that was state requirement, had to be three.
Now you know.
One year. One full year.
Yeah.
And then it's up to the superintendent.
New, new policy, GCK, professional staff assignments and transfers. In keeping with the collective bargaining agreement, but also to allow the superintendent to staff appropriately. GCO, evaluation of professional staff.
I, just a couple of quick comments on that one. The first paragraph seemed a little odd to me, the way, I guess it's fine, it says, you know, high-quality administrative performance, a continuous program for teacher and administrator evaluation will be established by the school committee. I mean, I think of that being established by the superintendent, but if we want to put the school committee there, I guess, or we could put both. But, but then the next line said, regular reports will be made to the superintendent concerning outcomes of these evaluations? I mean, you're doing the evaluation, so.
Right.
I mean, you're responsible for them, so it seems odd to me to say reports will be made to you because you're, you're doing them. So I, it didn't.
I wonder if they meant by the people who are doing the evaluations, who are not necessarily the superintendent in all cases? Because it's teachers who may be evaluated by an administrator other than the superintendent. And then somehow they're meant to report to her the results. That's the only thing I can figure out what was.
She doesn't evaluate most teachers.
Not personally, but, but you're basically responsible for all of it. I mean.
Sure. Right. But that's why she has to get the regular reports.
And I do get regular reports, but I don't get them, I mean, I get them both from principals, but also from Teach Point, so I'm, I think I do get fairly regular reports about evaluation.
Okay, all right, that's fine, just seemed odd to me. But, and then, you know, consider one sentence at the end here.
The very end?
Yeah, so this is an additional sentence to think about, would be something along the lines of, at the request of the school committee, the superintendent shall report on the status and changes, if made, to the evaluation process.
How do you feel about that, DeeDee?
Does it have to be in policy if it's just a request?
Well, I mean, that's saying that we have the right to ask for that.
Okay. So any, any changes to the, if I heard you correctly, I think I'm starting to, a little fuzzy on the edges, but if I heard you correctly, I think any changes to the evaluation system have to be negotiated, so I would imagine that, I mean, it would be part of the contract. So I think you would know because it was, it would be done through the contract negotiations? But yes, I mean, if there's anything that was done in, in between?
I just think it, yeah, well, I'm not a big issue, but it seems to me that, I mean, we don't do the evaluations and.
Well, except for deans.
Pardon?
Except for deans.
We, well, we, the school committee, we don't, we don't do the evaluations, but I think it's, it's important that we be informed about the process by which evaluations.
But I think DeeDee's point is, the process is in the collective bargaining agreement. When we approve the collective bargaining agreement, we're approving the process.
It's in state law, too.
And I think that actually speaks to why it says that it's going to be established by the school committee, because the collective bargaining agreements are an agreement between the Watertown School Committee.
Right.
And the bargaining units, John. It's not between the superintendent and the bargaining, you know, it's therefore, technically, even though DeeDee probably helps design all of that, when it's bargained on, it's an agreement between us and them. It's not an agreement between DeeDee and them. So our, the language would have to be that it will be established by us because we are the ones entering into the bargaining agreement with the.
Yeah, okay.
There's just no, I mean, you can't give it to DeeDee like that. I think that she's not the one who's designing the agreement.
Okay.
DeeDee, are you all right with this, the way it's worded?
Yes.
Okay. GCQD, resignation of professional staff members. This is a new policy for Watertown. Okay? GCQE, retirement of professional staff members. This is a new policy for Watertown. GCQF, suspension and dismissal of professional staff members. GCRD, private tutoring for pay, we changed it. Take a look at it. One of the important things is you cannot tutor students who are in your current class outside of school for pay.
But, but you can if the parents ask.
No.
No.
No, you're not allowed to.
That's literally a violation of state ethics law.
Well, that's what I, that's what I read in the fourth paragraph. A teacher may provide tutoring when the relationship is initiated by the parent or guardians or a student.
No, but if the student is or the future may be under the teacher's authority, the teacher will need to provide disclosure.
Yeah, so they just have to do a disclosure, but they can still do it.
But they can still do it. Yeah, that is.
That's contradictory.
This must be taken from the mass ethics, mass general laws.
Maybe strike the third paragraph because the rest is.
Well, the third paragraph, the third and the fourth are contradictory.
Right, well, I think, I think the fourth paragraph is a little bit unclear, but it seems like it's, a teacher may provide tutoring when the student isn't one of their own? I mean, it's sort of unclear.
Yeah, under the teacher's authority doesn't necessarily mean in their class. Yeah, I like getting rid of that.
I think getting rid, I mean, like, I also kind of feel like just the restriction of them not being in their class is, is even a bit too narrow. I mean, I don't really know that I agree with teachers tutoring any students in their school. I mean, it's just strange.
Really? I know tons of people who tutor within the school.
Yeah, I mean, I do too.
If you have two thousand in the school, you're not going to know what to get in there.
Dislike it.
But that means that you also can't tutor in the school buildings, and that's the other.
You can't do that.
Yeah, well, that's the other piece which may be news to some staff, which is you can't be accepting pay for tutoring a student in our buildings.
I'm pretty sure staff has been aware of that for quite a while.
I think it first came up maybe when people started having music lessons, private music lessons using the schools.
I think they're pretty aware of that rule now.
Good.
Ms. Potashman told me she cannot tutor.
So what would you do, strike the fourth paragraph?
I would strike the fourth.
I would agree. I think that's the right one.
Are we all okay with striking the fourth?
Yeah.
Okay, so you just can't tutor a child who's in your class at the time?
Yep.
We're trying to make it through G and then we're going to.
Where do we get there?
We're going to take a break. We're almost there. Actually, we're almost.
We're actually, we're zipping along. This is weeks and weeks and months and months of work. GDA, new policy, support staff positions. GDB, eliminated support staff contracts and compensation plans, because we're now, that's covered contractually. GDD, support staff vacations and holidays, again, in the contract. GDO, evaluation of support staffs in the contract. Evaluation of support staff, this GDO that's here simply says there is going to be evaluation and people have to be informed of that. GDQC, retirement of support staff, and then GDQD, suspension and dismissal of support staff, now becomes one GDQD. It says who can dismiss them. JB, equal educational.
Wait, should, should we, should we call it a night here? 9:15.
You flagging?
As much as I.
I have until 11 o'clock at night.
I'd really like to not.
Okay, so here's my question. So then we will not have had the first reading of anything from J on.
Right.
Correct?
Yep.
Yes.
So at the next meeting, we'll do the second reading for B, D, F, and G, and J, which appears to be incredibly lengthy, will have the first reading. Is that correct?
Yes.
If we can.
And we also, one of these days, will have I.
Right.
Or J and I.
Okay.
So there'll be more to come. Okay.
Yep.
I'm happy to retire.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work, Eileen. A couple of quick agenda items to finish up with. There's a school committee chair report, just a couple of things I'll mention. Number one, that I did communicate this to school committee members, that Kendra Foley has been appointed as the school committee representative on the Hosmer search process on the screening committee. And she was the one person who volunteered from the school committee. The superintendent's going to say a little bit more, I think, about that search process, which starts Wednesday. The other comment I would make is that at our last meeting, we had a fair amount of discussion about the fees for using buildings, and there was some concern about kind of formalizing in particular language, a kind of a practice, and so we decided not to do that. All I will say is that I don't think that, we're not bringing forward any other proposal at this stage, but the administration will continue charging fees in the way that they have been. And then, then the committee, the budget finance, and then maybe also working with buildings and grounds, if they want to do it a joint, will have to meet shortly after the budget process and look at what's the best strategy for fee structure that we can put in place for July 1. It's the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of items that I'd like to share with the community. Very exciting news to share that based on enrollment and availability of space at the Hosmer Elementary School, we're going to open up a second pre-kindergarten classroom. So we had several people on.
In the fall.
In the fall, yes. It's not now, in the fall. We, we had, you know, well over the amount of people on the waitlist that would, that could have been served by having a second classroom, so right now we're in the process of going through the waitlist. If we have any spaces that are available even after the waitlist, people should contact Karen Feeney in our preschool, just in case that they might be interested, knowing that we have the second classroom opening up. And speaking of kindergarten, as I alluded to in the budget presentation, our kindergarten registration is a little slower than we anticipated, so anyone out there who has yet to register their kindergarten child, please feel free to soon do so with Terry Stafford, our registrar, so that we can make sure that we have the appropriate staffing for kindergarten. And yes, we are moving forward with the Hosmer principal search. We've formed our screening committee. They will be meeting on Wednesday to review applicants and determine questions for the interview process, and then determine who they want to bring in for interviews. Those interviews will take place the following week, I think on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And that committee's charge is to put forth finalists for me to consider. Once they've done so, we will invite our finalists into the district to meet with teachers and families and administrators and community members, and that will culminate with a final public interview as well. So people will have an opportunity to be part of the process, even if they were not part of the screening committee. One last thing, we've talked a lot about opportunities within our public schools for, you know, vocational and technical education. We had a great presentation from Laura Alderson Rotendo and Shirley Lundberg around Project Lead the Way and other opportunities that we have in our career and technical education program at the high school. We're very excited that we're going to be partnering with a group called City is a Lab, who's going to be looking at Watertown businesses and the needs of our local businesses in terms of jobs and skills and the necessary information that they would have, that we'd expect from Watertown High School graduates to have. So they will be working with people within the business community, parents, a few school community members, teachers, teachers at the high school, just to try to figure out what is, what would be a good course of action for our programming within our high school to make sure that we're meeting the needs of their, their futures, which is part of our mission. So we're very excited to be moving forward with that. We look forward to potentially in the first meeting in May, to do a presentation to the school committee as part of the teaching and learning showcase around what opportunities exist for students within the Watertown Public Schools as they try to prepare for the future that lies ahead, so. And, you know, I know that you're going to go over some dates, but the superintendent's coffee is coming up on Monday, March the 25th, at nine in the morning and seven in the evening in the Phillips Administration Building on the third floor. We'll also be holding our anti-bias coalition meeting right prior to that at 5:30, so very exciting things happening within the district.
Can I ask a quick question, DeeDee?
Yes.
In terms of the pre-K classroom that's opening up at the Hosmer, is the plan to get the kids off the Hosmer waiting list, and then are you going to open it up to the other waiting lists for those students who maybe didn't get into the Lowell and the Cuniff before filling it with more Hosmer?
So we put out a request to everyone that was on the waitlist to find out anyone's interest in being in the pre-K classroom.
Okay, so any from all three schools?
Yep, so we gauged interest before we committed to having the classroom, and now we're going to open it up to registrations.
So it'll be students that could come from any of the schools to the Hosmer?
Yep.
And they would all get, anybody who's placed on a waitlist would get preferential?
Yes.
Placement in the second classroom before you started going off?
Yes, exactly, yep. Yeah, I just, I mean, you, you wonder if, at this point, many people have already made other plans.
Right.
You know, when they found out they couldn't be part of the pre-K, so we just want to make sure that, you know, we can fully fill the class, which we know we can, and then, yes, off the waitlist first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Galson. Any new business? Anybody? Okay, announcements, one change that's on our agenda. It says school building committee on Wednesday, that's not taking place. There is, I will add to it, there on Thursday, March 21st, Sustainability Subcommittee of the School Building Committee is meeting in this room at 6:00. Superintendent, already mentioned her coffee, anti-bias coalition, and then next school committee meeting is April 1st in this chamber. Oh, it formed?
Can I just have one thing? One other event that's happening is on, this Thursday evening, is the Watertown Youth Coalition is having their town, town hall meeting.
I think it's Wednesday, isn't it, DeeDee?
Did I say Thursday? I meant Wednesday.
I just, because I signed up on my reading.
The 20th. Yes, definitely on the 20th.
In the library?
Yes, in the library, yep.
Did he think that this was canceled?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. Anything else? All right, motion to adjourn?
Not until April the.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
April the. We have a break.
We have a break.